It's my pleasure to call the City of Fullerton City Council meeting to order. Corporal, please read the roll.
Mayor Chapey?
Here.
Mayor Protam Seaborn?
Present.
Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Here.
Councilmember Florrie?
Here.
And Councilmember Whitaker?
Present.
And I don't see Pastor Viacona here. Is he just going to lead us? He's not here. We do have a Reverend here. I wonder if you could lead us in an invocation?
I can do that.
I always look out.
Shall we rise? Father and God, thank you for each day you give us, for it truly is a gift from you. Lord, we pray that we use them wisely and use them effectively to serve you and your people. Lord, be with us tonight as we gather to discuss the affairs of the city of Fullerton and all the citizens that live here. Lord, may we keep our conversation civil, may we affect things that are in the wonderful community of Fullerton.
Amen. Thank you for the great invocation. This time we have the Pledge of Allegiance by the Fullerton Union High School.
Forward, march! Forward, march!
Follow me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors. March time, march! Forward, march!
Please don't go too far. We'd like a picture. And if the leader here would introduce himself and tell us a little bit about the group at Fullerton?
My name is Mike Galbertson. I've got the best job in the world because I got to teach great Americans like this right here. Have a round of applause for these young cadets. The J R T C program at Fullerton High School is the oldest in the district. We've been there for 24 years right now, coming up on our 25th. Both of us, there's two instructors there. We're both retired military. I did 22 years in the infantry and my battle buddy did 22 years in the engineer corps. He's been there longer than I have. We have 207 cadets. Our mission is to train and teach young people to be better citizens. We do have a lot of community service projects. Our kids get PE credit when they enroll in as cadets in J R T C. We have 207 of them right now, cadets in the program. But we're more than just a PE course. We teach citizenship and we spend a lot of time on leadership. I'm working on my dissertation right now, which is how to assess leadership effectiveness in a youth leadership development program. So, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Well, I saw this same group recently out at the cemetery where we had a very delayed military funeral for Mac Willey, who was a member of the class of 1963 or '4. And due to circumstances, he did not have his rightful military funeral. And so it's a special event and this group here came out as a member of the Fullerton Union High School. The same as Mac Willey came out and did what they just did for us. That was magnificent. Can we get a picture of you guys up here? Come on out here, cadets.
Yes, I graduated from Fullerton High School.
He's an Indian. Indians for life!
We have another Fullerton Indian here who might join us for a picture.
Absolutely.
Sharon Quirk Silva.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Give you a slight momento here. Not exactly a mayor badge, but it is a symbol of the city of Fullerton. Thank you for coming here. Certainly, you may have one too.
Thank you. It's our honor.
Good luck with your dissertation.
Thank you.
Sir, I have a quick question for you. Is that over here on the dais? Looking at your dress blues, is that a lieutenant colonel?
Lieutenant Colonel. You have a retired 22 years infantry officer.
Thank you for running the program over there. I was a member of the Fullerton J R T C back in the 80s and 90s and had a great time, learned a lot about leadership. Thank you for any time at all.
Top of our case.
Will do. Thank you very much for your service.
Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
I have no report. Mr. Fels, want to give a report? I believe that...
I believe the mayor's going to make a few comments out of closed session.
This report is an update on the West Coyote Hills property. This has been cleared by both Chevron and the groups involved, so I'm going to read it exactly. I'd like to provide an update on the Path Forward Plan announced at the April 15 City Council meeting pertaining to the future of the West Coyote Hills property. The Path Forward Plan was the result of talks between Pacific Coast Homes, the Friends of Coyote Hills, Open Coyote Hills, and the city. A call for Pacific Coast Homes to sell the Coyote Hills property if the parties can agree on a fair price and reasonable terms. I'm happy to report there has been a considerable amount of progress. First, the city and the interested parties are focused on acquisition of the planned development area known as Neighborhood Two, which is adjacent to the city-owned Robert E. Ward Nature Preserve. This newly preserved land would combine with existing open space to double the size of the Ward Preserve. This represents a significant increase in the contiguous open space that will benefit the residents of Fullerton. Second, discussions are focused on establishing clear parameters to acquire all or a portion of the remainder of the site if funds are available. Lastly, as part of the Path Forward Plan, Pacific Coast Homes has filed a revised development application with the city that is currently being processed. If approved, the implementation development plan will be delayed for a reasonable yet definitive amount of time. This will allow additional time for interested parties to locate funding sources to acquire the land. Now we're going to move on to presentations. I might say that originally we had scheduled in the forecast a public hearing on a proposal by the Watt Company. We thought that might take two hours. They requested that this be postponed until November 18, I believe, so that will not be part of the meeting tonight. You may, if any are interested here, to comment on that item during public comments if they so wish. We do have more than the usual number of presentations because we have the extra time, we believe, at this meeting. First presentation is a State of the State by our Assemblyperson, Sharon Quirk Silva.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Thank you for having me here tonight, and I feel like it's a little bit like coming home. I like to call it bringing Sacramento home. And as your California State Assemblywoman that represents all of Fullerton, the 65th District, I just wanted to give you a little update of what we've been up to since I was here last year, just about this time. As you know, we've had a very busy district office from hosting cash-for-college workshops to help parents file their FAFSA form, financial aid form. In addition to that, we've held senior scam, senior fraud workshops. We know here in Fullerton, there have been robberies, and our attendance at these type of presentations have been extremely high. We had hosted an event just a few weeks ago here, Hire a Vet, with almost 300 attendees and many, many vendors that were actually hiring, from the coroner's office to painting companies, really reaching out, saying that we're ready to work with our veterans and hire. In addition to that, we were able to bring in California State Controller John Chang, where we had over 120 attendees talking about the state of our economy. And as you have seen here, just in Fullerton, with housing prices moving up, with homes being sold here in Fullerton, and other indicators like car sales, was just able to attend the Orange County Auto Dealers Association 50th anniversary, where they are very excited about their numbers this year. James Renick, who we know here in Fullerton, who owns Renick Cadillac, 60 years in Fullerton, has said they're not only selling Cadillacs, but they're selling the other favorite car, the Subaru, the love car. So with that being said, that we know at the California budget that we did balance the budget on time for the fourth year. This year, a big emphasis on a rainy day fund, that the voters will have a chance to look at the ballot with Proposition Two, I believe, if they would like to go ahead and see the state invest in a rainy day fund. This was a bipartisan support, not only with that, but the water bond, which you will also see on your ballot, which is Proposition One. And again, when I say bipartisan, it really took Democrats and Republicans coming together to say, we want these elements, not only in the water bond, but in the rainy day fund. Senator Bob Huff was there, right at the signing ceremony, making sure that some of those additional language to protect not only our residents, but taxpayers. That being said, we know we're in a severe drought. I know Fullerton has taken that seriously, and we worked very closely with our water agencies to make sure we could put some language in if the water bond is passed that would really make sense here in Fullerton. Everything from contamination, which we know we have a growing plume here, to storage, to groundwater replenishment. So those type of specific language puts not only Fullerton, but the 65th District in line to be able to access those funds if that is passed. At the state level, I can say we had a very productive legislative session. The governor signed eight bills of mine, three, I just want to talk about three of them, that we are particularly pleased at, about AB 1453, just today. That is the Orange County Veteran Cemetery, that we were so pleased when the Irvine City Council voted five to zero to say, yes, we will convey 125 acres. We know, working locally with government, it's extremely important, and as they said yes, we still moved it through both houses with no-no votes, and to the governor, where he signed that just last week. And today made a very quick 15-minute trip out to the Irvine site, where he was able to take a look at, which may be several years out, because these projects take quite a long time, to see what will be the future veteran cemetery in Orange County. That being said, we know, and I want to be very transparent, that this is a big lift. Our next step is now to work with the federal government to apply in a grant format. Many of you, as city officials, have really spent quite a bit of time working on grants, and they're not easy. And we are very hopeful that this will continue to move. In addition to these type of legislations, one of the focuses that I've had from leaving Fullerton to now being at the state, has really been to focus on what I learned here. And coming out of an era where we had the Kelly Thomas tragedy, that really put our city in such a tragic period, and us focusing not only on police reform, but homeless and mental health issues, I think one of the things that I took with me is what could I do at the state? So I was extremely pleased to move forward legislation, which is AB 1733, which is a homeless fee waiver. And what that says, at the simplest way of describing it, is if someone is experiencing homelessness, they can then go to the county clerk, get a birth certificate, and to the DMV, and get an ID with a fee waiver. And the reason this is important is, as we know with many, many of our nonprofits here in Fullerton, coast-to-coast pathways for hope, that they can't really start the recovery for some of these people that are experiencing homelessness without ID. They can't even get a bus pass. So this was, again, bipartisan, with many co-authors from across the aisle, my Republican colleagues, because they know in their cities, they're dealing with the same thing. So how do we start to access those services and get them back to work? So extremely proud that the governor signed that. And then the third one I wanted to talk about was AB 1560, which is California Competes. And California Competes is my legislation that puts in $25 million through 2019, so that small businesses can compete for tax credits to keep those business doors open. We know that California sometimes has that reputation as not being as business-friendly as that we want it to be. So this has been the year of welcome home to business, with the governor signing not only the aerospace legislation for Lockheed and to come back here and do their work here, the film tax credit to say, we want those big productions done back here in California in Hollywood, the makeup artists, the lighting technicians, those are all jobs we want to keep here. And my bill, AB 1560, says, small businesses, we want to have you keep your doors open. So very proud of that work. And as you know, last year I was named Veterans Chair, not just a year ago, and have spent quite a bit of effort, not only with the Orange County Veterans Cemetery bill, but also legislation that says to those veterans that are coming home, we want to work with you closely. So investing over $3 million at the county level for our county veteran service officers. This is, again, to tell those veterans, you've earned your benefits, let us help you connect so we can make sure not only they're accessing their benefits, but that they are also making sure that they're not being preyed upon. All too often, we've seen some of our veterans really being preyed upon because of their benefits. Fullerton has a prime example of incredible veteran centers at Fullerton College and at Cal State Fullerton. So we are extremely happy to be working closely with our veterans. And again, if there's a veteran out there, we hope that they'll contact our office. But I've just been really proud to have this opportunity to serve, and if you have any questions, be happy to answer those.
Yes, how was it to work with Senator Huff?
Well, as you know, the big myth is that we don't work together, Republicans and Democrats. And I think the truth is that we often work together. You know that the legislation that Fullerton moved forward with the senator, that actually was born out of the days when I was here as mayor, are combining with the fire department, with Brea in Fullerton, that then took a legislative fix, and we were able to move that forward. So many times, we're co-authors on each other's bills, principal authors, and that's a little nuance that the public doesn't always realize, that often, if you look at our legislative package, you will see Republicans and Democrats on each other's legislation the majority of time. So I would say we did very well this year.
Thank you very much for that, and I'm very glad to see this nonpartisan effort. We need as much as that as we can get.
Thank you. Thank you, members. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Now we have a presentation from the Orange County Sanitation District. I think we have some people here. Are you the guy that was drinking the sewer water? The reclaimed purified sewer water?
Never drank sewer water. But we've all had reclaimed water. Will this come up on the screen for them?
My name is Rob Thompson. I'm with the Orange County Sanitation District. I'm the director of engineering there. Thank you for the opportunity, mayor, city councilmembers, to give you an update on what we're doing to improve the infrastructure of Orange County and Fullerton also. We are... Down arrow? So at Orange County Sanitation District, our business statement is, we protect the public health and the environment by protecting wastewater collection, recycling. So our job is to take enriched water and turn it into a resource. And that resource could be either biosolids that we use for fertilizer, or it can be water that we use to drink. So we have a long history of that. We've been working in cooperation with Orange County Water District for some time to make that happen. A little bit more about us as an agency. We are an agency governed by 25 board members. The board members we have are made up of 21 cities, where we represent two sanitary districts, a water district, and a county supervisor. So we have a very wide representation across the county, and we work closely in cooperation with the cities that we work with. Our service area is a little under 480 square miles, and we treat about 200 million gallons a day. If you think of that in a volumetric term, it's like filling Anaheim Stadium about three times every single day. So it's quite a river of wastewater that we receive that we turn into resources. We serve about 2.5 million people, and we have 15 pump stations throughout the area, mostly centered within Newport, as you can see there in the yellow box. And we have two very large treatment plants. One plant is in Fountain Valley, 405 in Euclid roughly. That 100-acre site is where we supply water to the Orange County Water District, which we're personally at that little cutout. I won't mess with it. You can see the little cutout in the Fullerton plant there before you. That is Orange County Water District. So we take water in, we screen it, we do the settling process, we do secondary treatment, which is a biological treatment system, and we provide about 100 million gallons a day to Orange County Water District. They create from that 100 million, 70 million gallons of purified water that shift up the river and to these lakes that are around in Anaheim. The water goes back in the ground. Six months later, it can't come out your tap. So yes, everybody in northern Orange County that drinks well water, at some point has had some recharge for the impact of that. So it's an exciting opportunity for us to take a river that never ends and keep that returning to our drinking water system. The second plant we have is in Huntington Beach. It's also a 100-acre site. That water currently is discharged to the Pacific Ocean. It is cleaned to the same level we clean it before we give it to the Water District. And again, we discharge that five miles out into the ocean, away from the recreational waters. Another thing that we've done lately is to accept urban runoff. So all that water that you have coming down the storm drains and the channels that would normally have gone to the beaches, and added all that bacterial loading to the beach, we now reclaim that. We take about 5 million gallons a day, and again, that is reclaimable water that we reprocess. So that's how we maintain A-plus beaches in Orange County. So a lot going on in the Sanitation District. So in general, how the water gets to us, water starts at somebody's house, goes through their private lateral and inner city system. All the cities that we work with tend to be local agencies, which is sanitary district. They collect that water and put it into our regional trunk sewer system. The regional trunk sewers generally flow towards our key treatment plants southerly in our county, and we treat and then discharge the ocean or make the water available to Orange County Water District. So that's a simplified schematic of how the water gets to us, which brings us to your city. We have been building assets in the city since the 50s, so we have been active for quite some time, working with city staff to lay out a method to make sure that all the wastewater generated in Fullerton is collected and delivered to our plants. In the past few years, we have started to ramp up our effort to rebuild and refurbish a lot of those systems. So what you'll see along the, what we have listed as Project 271, we worked with city staff, what looks like one line is actually two lines, because the line's built in the 50s, growth occurred, we built a second line for more capacity, called an interceptor, which gave us twice the capacity. However, we had uneven growth, if you will. People make their best plans in the 60s, but the 70s, 80s were all around. People use things differently than you anticipated. And we were planning an upsizable line, which would have torn up some city streets and been a bit of an impact. We were closer to the city, found out you were already reworking some of your streets and sewer systems that you owned. All we did was reroute one of your lines, so it changed which pipe we used, and we were able to avoid all that impact to the citizenry and save the money to the ratepayers. So those kinds of forward-looking opportunities, we're always looking for, and Fullerton has always been a great partner of ours. As we move forward, we have a lot of work coming up, which I'll spend a little more time talking about here in the State College area. We have a major project that's been on the books for quite some time, and that is the upsize of what we call our New Hope Century Trunk Sewer. The name comes because at the end, it'll head to our plant in New Hope Street, our period's obviously the century ending pipe. We have been in contact with city staff, and they asked if we could expedite our implementation of this project to coordinate with some plants that they had going on in a great separation that we're already working on. So what we intend to do is move forward as quickly as we can by breaking the project into three parts. Instead of trying to do one project, which will go all the way from Cal State Fullerton all the way down to Anaheim Stadium, we want to work with the city of Fullerton and minimize the impact to the citizenry above the 91 to Cal State Fullerton, deal with all those impacts as quickly as we can with city staff, work separately and at the same time with the city of Anaheim. They have some different needs and different preferences. So rather than have one sort of unwieldy project with seven miles of pipe, we're going to break it up into a little more manageable construction segments. Sanitation District has a long history of doing large pipe work. Our smallest pipes are eight inches, our largest pipes are 120-inch pipes. So we're very good at pipe placement, and we understand impacts to cities. So we will do everything we can to minimize that impact and coordinate with the work you're already doing with city staff, so that we don't do work, disappear, and then have the citizenry see more public work going on. So the idea here is to do our best to coordinate and minimize the overall impact. What this will allow us to do is upgrade our capacity primarily. We have a pump station at Cal State Fullerton at the north end of the campus that pumps water away from this trunk, which is one of the capacity projects that was done in the early 60s, I believe, and put in the door, a Senna and a River Interceptor trunk. That water is unreclaimable to us at this point, because it comes from the inland empire and the Hudson constituents that we choose not to recycle. So in order for us to make more water available to Fountain Valley for recycling, we need to upsize the capacity in this line. In addition, the line is a little old, and it has some opportunities, we like to say, for its condition. So rather than do a rehabilitation project and then do an upsize, we want to do the right thing and upsize it and renew the infrastructure at the same time.
The initial expansion of GWRS, is that being done to accommodate these greater flows? Are they being done in tandem?
We plan our flows very carefully. Actually, flows are going down across the service area, so we're doing everything we can to maintain the flows for what we've already built. In March, the Orange County Water District will up its capacity from 70 million to 100 million gallons a day. But what that means is we have to go from 100 million of supply to 130 million in supply. So everything we're doing is about making that water available to what's been built or is on the books to be built. Hopefully, it will rain, and we will have more water to ship to them naturally. But we work very closely with Orange County Water District. So it's difficult, bottom line. Whenever you talk about putting in a piece of pipe of 42 inches wide, 48 inches wide, it's a big trench. So you have big machines and rather large impacts. Part of our design effort will be to work with city staff to talk about what impacts we want to deal with. There's always the classic trade-off, intense impact in short time or smaller impacts in longer time. It's just a question of how best to manage that for your particular streets. And again, I think city of Fullerton would be a little different from the city of Anaheim. We're doing a lot of work in Newport, learning a lot of lessons by closing lanes in... We're doing a lot of work in Newport, learning a lot of lessons by closing lanes in Pacific Coast Highway in Newport Beach. So I have a relatively thick skin and I've learned some new words, but it's all good. So we are working on this. I'm going to guess the question's going to come up about duration, how long will we be in the street? And a lot depends on the impacts that we're willing to live with. Is it night work? Is it day work? Is it plated? Can we put up K Ls? We actually have two rights of way in this street. The current pipe and the pipe that we purchased about 15 years ago. The opportunities to us are how to bypass sewer flow while we're doing the upsize. A lot of what we do is about keeping the interceptor running while we upgrade it or upsize it. So I don't have an answer for you yet. We haven't done the geotech work. We don't know about final alignments. We don't know restrictions that will be placed on us to minimize impacts. So other than that, are there any questions that I might answer for?
Thank you for a very thorough presentation. Thank you for the good work in giving us additional water supply. Now Chief Kenaby, Pink Tober.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Wolfgang Kenaby, our Fire Chief. Having a back of me, in fact, I'm going to bring him on down. Come on, bring our firefighters on down. We have some representation of some T-shirts we're going to be selling. It gives me a great pleasure to give you a little presentation on what we've termed Pink Tober. And you know our firefighters, they respond 24/7, 365 for 911 emergencies. But they also do stuff both on and off duty for the community in addition to that. And part of that is October's cancer awareness. And our Pink Tober, the Firefighters Association represented by one of our captains, Pete Gray, and our engineer, one of our engineers, John Miller, just done tremendous job in raising money over the years. They do it on their own time. Firefighter Association really supports this. We've all been touched by cancer somewhere in our lives. My sister, my mother both died of breast cancer. And it's significant and my hats off to our firefighters for doing it. What I'd like to do is, I'd like to have about a four-minute video that was made. And this is even more meaning as we have, we have one of our local teachers who every year, the Firefighter Association through this process, we pick one organization to give the money to. And this year, it's on behalf of this young lady that we're, you're going to see a little video on.
Double click or I'm left?
Double click, it's good because I'm...
Hi, my name is John Miller of Fullerton Fire Department. I'm an engineer. And on behalf of the Fullerton Firefighters Association, we're here to talk to you about the third annual Pink Tober event that we'll be running. The previous two years, we were very successful. We raised approximately $34,000 for cancer research through those two years. And we're open to do the same thing this year. This year, we'll be sponsoring a local Fullerton elementary school teacher named Dory Madrid, who's recently diagnosed with stage four breast cancer.
So last May, I noticed a, from a self-exam, a pretty large lump in my left breast. My diagnosis was stage four breast cancer. My next step is a double next step to me, that's mid-October. I can't even begin to explain the level of support that we've received. It's just been breathtaking. It's been incredible. And you hear people say that, but until you're the person on the receiving end, you don't realize how important that is. Students wearing pink T-shirts or, you know, fight cancer T-shirts and donations to our family in case I need extra, you know, support in the future. The Fullerton Fire Department and St. Jude's Walk Among the Stars. Now, all I want to do is live as long as I can and do more of that and do it even better. I want to be a better teacher. I want to be a better mom. I want to be a better wife.
We've got the entire community, our students, our alumni, our family, our friends, the Fullerton Fire Department, the medical professionals at St. Jude, everybody pushing us forward in this marathon. And on top of it all is a stubborn fiery redhead who has never once said no to a challenge.
...something like this. But one of the biggest honors that I'm having is being asked by the Fullerton Fire Department to be, I think it's the Pink Tober Girl, I'm not exactly sure what my title is, but I met with the Fire Department a couple of weeks ago. And wow, what a tremendous group of men who are so committed to raising cancer awareness and raising money for funding for cancer awareness for fighting cancer and research and clinical trials. And it just sounds like they put their heart and soul into this whole month. And actually, the fire engine too, the fire engine that is end-to-end pink. And I saw it and I just, I almost started crying when I saw it because it was just so beautiful, but I couldn't believe it. I guess they take it around to all the events and they're selling T-shirts, which I'm told are pretty spectacular. And basically, all of the proceeds, all the donations, all the money they raise will go to a cancer foundation of my choice.
Shows you the support in our lives. So I would just like your support, the community's support. And again, I appreciate, and I have Captain Pete Gray going to come up. We have a couple of other events going on in the city that we'd like to fill you in on.
Hello, Council Pete Gray, Fullerton Fire. Thanks for having us here tonight. Real quickly, some of the events that we're going to be involved in are a few of the football games, Fullerton-Troy and Sunny Hill football games, along with the farmer's market that we'll be at every Thursday night. But one of the larger events that we're going to be at is one this Saturday and it's from 11 o'clock until 8:00 PM. We're calling it a buzz off. And it's donation of your hair, donation of ponytails for locks of love. Heroes Restaurant is partnering up with us along with five major salons. Those salons are Salon Lujon, Salon Technique, Salon Amridge, Joshua Christopher, and also the Chop and Mops. They'll be manning the, or staffing the makeshift barber shop that we put up. Also, Heroes is going to be donating 10% of all the proceeds of that day to our cause. Dory Madrid is an amazing person. She's going to be donating all of her money that we're raising in her name back to St. Jude. It's the Crossan Cancer Institute that we're going to be donating this amount of money back to. And as the video did mention, we're just about $25,000 over the last three years. And we hope to, with donations and also the purchasing of all the T-shirts and such that we've been doing to raise that by quite a bit. We do have an online store that you can go to and that's FFD Pinkproject.org. FFD Pinkproject.org. You can get that on your computer and you can purchase anything that we're selling through that also. One of the things that the video did touch on, I want to explain a little bit further, it's the fire engine. We have an old retired fire engine that the Fire Chief has allowed us to use our money, not the city's money, our money, to go ahead and wrap with vinyl. And that vinyl will be removed at the end of this month. But through this month, we're going to use that as a rolling tribute. And so people who have beaten cancer or fighting cancer or even those names of those who have been lost to cancer. If you see that engine around in any of the places, we're allowing people to sign the names of those people who have been affected by cancer. So our goal is to have that engine in as many places as we can throughout the month as a rolling hallmark or a tribute. So once again, thank you very much, Fire Chief, and also the City Council for allowing us to take your time. And please enjoy what we're doing for the community.
Will the buzz off be at Heroes?
It will be right to the rear of Heroes, yes, sharing the two restaurants. And each person does not have to buzz their head. I'm growing mine in order to shave it off. But just remember, even if you do go to the restaurant that day, that 10% of those proceeds will be donated back to us. Thank you.
Do you have any spare T-shirts right now?
We do. We have T-shirts to the back of the chambers right now. So if anyone is interested, we are selling those T-shirts here.
I'm interested. May I buy one right now?
You can. You can.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Any questions you have of us, I'd be happy to take. If not, just thank you so much for your support.
Thank you guys for all that you're doing.
Chief, while Becky's here, I'd like to recognize her. I attended a couple of Saturdays ago, the Fullerton... Uh-uh, Becky, you're not getting away. Becky is our first female captain of firefighters, of the Fullerton Fire Department. So that is a wonderful achievement. And I heard somebody say, gee, you know, should you recognize her just because she's female and she's a captain? Yes, we should recognize her for that because it is a first step for this city and it is an inspiration to young women in our community. So thank you, Becky.
At this time, we have a presentation on Childhood Poisoning Prevention Week. If we might have Cecile Truong come forward.
Hi, good evening. My name is Cecile Truong. I'm a public health nurse and coordinator of the Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program in Orange County. Present with me, three of our staff members, can you please stand up? Our environmental health specialist, our health educator, and our other public health On behalf of Orange County Healthcare Agency, I'd like to thank Mayor Chafee and council members for making this proclamation, recognizing an important public health issue, which is childhood lead poisoning prevention. Lead poisoning is particularly dangerous for young children because their nervous system is still developing. And lead is a potent neurotoxin that causes permanent learning and behavioral problems. And there's no safe level of lead. Lead Poisoning Prevention Week is an opportunity to remind families in our communities to focus on prevention year-round by avoiding lead exposure such as, sources such as chipped and peeling paint, help me if I forget something, imported toys, candies, pottery, folk remedies, traditional remedies. And parents also need to be careful not to bring lead dust in the home, on their clothing, from their job or hobbies, such as constructions, welding, battery recycling. Lead is a silent poison. Most children with lead poisoning do not show symptoms and do not act sick. And there's a very simple blood test and that's the only way to make the diagnosis. Children in publicly funded programs and those who live in housing that were built before 1978 are especially at high risk. So parents should ask doctors to perform that important test. Our Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Team is available to conduct case management and home investigations in cases with high lead levels to ensure that the source is identified and removed and that the children's lead levels decrease. So again, thank you for making this proclamation.
Well, proclamation comes from the City Council, not just for me. And I would like to commend the Healthcare Agency Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Program staff for all their coordinated efforts to increase community awareness about lead hazards and lead poisoning prevention methods for healthy families in Orange County. Therefore, on behalf of the City Council, we do hereby proclaim that the week of October 19 through October 25 is Childhood Lead Poisoning Prevention Week. It's my pleasure to present this to you.
Thank you. And if you have questions, please call our office at 714-567-6220.
Thank you for all the great work you're doing to keep our families healthy. And we have a presentation from the North Orange County Community College District regarding Major J. And we have Dr. Verdine to present. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your Chafee. City Council members, thank you for this opportunity for me to address you tonight about Major J. City Council has always been very friendly to Fullerton College. You all know that last year, we celebrated our 100th anniversary. Councilmember Bruce Whittaker was mayor at the time and helped us kick off the festivities at the museum. And this past April, we have the Sentinel Gala. And Mayor Doug Chafee, you were present there and you helped us celebrate this wonderful moment in the history of the college. The college has had very strong ties with this city. The college performs a wonderful task in this city. We are one of the biggest employers of the city. We currently serve 26,000 students. And on any given day, 10,000 of those students are on campus and help the economy of Fullerton. We are the third biggest employer of the city of Fullerton. We train the people of Fullerton. We prepare them for future careers. And if I were to turn around and ask people in the audience tonight, and if I were to ask you, I'm pretty sure that the majority of you have some connection with Fullerton College. A college that has been around for 100 years cannot have left a significant impact on the lives of the people of this wonderful city, the city of education. This past year, we had a huge number of firsts at Fullerton College. I mentioned earlier on, this was a record year in enrollment, 26,000 students. In May, we gave 1,639 associate degrees. That was a 16% increase over the previous year. We transferred 1,475 students to the CSUs and the UCs, keeping us in the top three institutions statewide. Bear in mind, there are 112 community colleges in California. And this city has the college that has the third greatest number of transfers in the whole state. We transferred 443 Latino students, making us the number one community college in Orange County. Orange County has nine community colleges. And there are other community colleges... Orange County has nine community colleges, and there are other community colleges in Orange County that has a significantly higher proportion of Latino students than we do. But yet, we manage to be the number-one in the county of Orange. We also are, in the state, a leading producer of what we call Associate Degree for Transfers, which the state passed into a law a few years ago. However, as we said, the college is old. We have a lot of old buildings on campus. I know most of you have visited the campus. We have what we call the 400, the 600 Building, the North Science Building. We had an earthquake recently, and we had significant damage in that building. That building dates back to the first half of the 22th century. We have what we call the Computer Science, Computer Information Services and Business Building, and all the building that came into existence about the same time, similar problems. The Humanities Building, where we currently house our veterans program. Over the past three years, we have doubled the number of veterans that we serve. We want to do an excellent job for them. We want to prepare them for careers. We want to make sure that they have what is necessary for them to be productive members of the community. Yet, we do not have a space for them. We have converted three classrooms into what we call the Veterans Resource Center. We need to do better for them. They have put their lives on the line to defend our country, and we want to be able to do better for them. The college has a leading theater program in the state of California, yet we have an aging campus theater. We have the largest music program in the whole state of California. Our program rivals the programs of the CSUs, and in many cases, our program is significantly better. Yet, the building where we house the program is falling apart. If you look at the south side of Chapman, we have the Student Services Building, and that building was built about 60 years ago and is not able to support the students that we have currently. We want to be able to do better than that. In order to be able to fix all those problems, the North Orange County Community College District, which comprises of Cypress College, Fullerton College, and the School of Continuing Education—and we have in the audience with us right now the former Provost of the School of Continuing Education, Ms. Christine Terry's in the audience—we want to be able—and that program, that SCE program, serves all the students that are not ready for college. We prepare them with ESL. We prepare them for careers. We prepare the older adults with everything that they need so that they can have a productive life in society after they have spent all their life helping us. In order to be able to meet all those demands, the North Orange County Community College District will put on the ballot what we call Measure J. Measure J is going to go for $574 million, and it will cost the taxpayers $14.90 for $100,000 of assessed value. And it requires for passage 55% of support amongst voters. We just want you to understand that the success of a new society depends on its ability to provide a world-class education to its citizens and to have a vision for the future so that the children that are growing up today will never be short of classroom space and will never need to leave their city, their county, to get an education. This is the vision of the North Orange County Community College District. We want to ensure the future of this part of the world because this area has produced leaders. It is a flourishing area with a flourishing economy, and we want it to continue to remain like this. And we want to make sure that with the passage of this fund, we succeed in doing that. And I do hope that you will give us your endorsement and that you will give us your support so that we can continue to be a leading force, not only in Orange County, but in the state, in the country, and in the world. And I thank you for your support, and if you do have any questions, I'll be very happy to answer them for you.
Will you have a Citizens Oversight Committee?
Yes, we do have a Citizens Oversight Committee, and the previous measure that was passed, Measure X, had a Citizens Oversight Committee as well.
Okay. And you have 38,000 students coming in now?
26,000.
Sorry, 26.
26,000, yeah.
Well, there were a couple of students back in their 30s, my parents. That's where they met, so thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Now, if Fran Carey would come forward and tell us all about Needlework Guild of America.
Good evening and welcome to the council members, and welcome to all of you who are here tonight. I thought I would follow my, our president, Deb Berryman, for the Needlework Guild, but she's going to follow me evidently. I moved to Fullerton from the Midwest 47 years ago, and I have been a member of Fullerton Needlework Guild for 47 years. A couple of months after I came here, I was invited to a coffee to explain the workings of Fullerton Needlework Guild and why we should join and help. The purpose of Needlework Guild was to aid needy children with clothing. The idea actually came from England and was came, came with a coal mine disaster, which they were helping the orphaned children. It was started here in Philadelphia and in 1882, so within being over 100 years. Our guild here is over 60 years old. We are interested, and we have done in our work and working through the schools, giving children needy clothing, especially shoes, which a lot of people did not give and charities could not give, but we buy shoes, and shoes are often so very needed. In fact, I remember one instance that we were asked to give nine pairs of shoes to nine children whose father had died and they had no way, other way to go to the funeral, and I think we gave them not the nine, but two pairs of shoes each, and those are sometimes so necessary for children to have. We get many of our, and nearly all of our recommendations through the social service, through our schools, and through any one, any other social service that is, that we have. Our guild itself, we knit, and when I say "we," I don't include myself, but they knit and they sew, and we provide money to buy clothes that are needed. Very often, the recommendations come from the schools and from the teachers and so forth, who know what the situations of the schools. We have done that for a good many years. We have our 200 members strong. I have been a member a long time ago. It was almost 300. It was over 300 members, but that's when moms weren't working to the extent that they are today, and they had more time to which to join some of the groups we have. In other areas that we have worked in, we have also found out that it's necessary to work with adults because many adults need our help. They need our help, so we work with charity groups and any, anyone who needs help, we will try to help. But we work the charity groups with both men and women, and again, I can remember one place where I attended to send, I intended to send a gal out for an interview, and I said, "You need some decent, you know, clothing." She came in a sweatshirt and a, and to the office in a sweatshirt and a deal, and she said, "I don't have anything else." Do you understand what that means? Have you ever not had anything else to wear? And so sometimes, in trying to understand what other people do, we have to understand how the need and how we can help and do everything that we can to help, and I'm so very proud of our organization over the period of time. We often close with a little prayer or saying that we have that I would like to reiterate. Father of Moses, we are clothed, we are fed, we are sound in mind and body. In gratitude for those who gave us several things, we offer material things to those who are less fortunate. We request, seeing the words of the hands and our hearts, that we may, each garment that we send may carry on to the wearer not only decency and warmth, but courage, confidence, and hope for brighter days tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
Stay up here with me. Yes, yes.
And Ms. Berryman, would you like to add to that?
Um, I'm just going to add a couple of things. I think we've talked about Needlework Guild for a while. Again, to be part of Needlework Guild, we're always looking for members. It could be women, men, doesn't matter. You don't have to sew to be part of it. We look for contributions. We look for people to shop for us. We've served over 400 people this year alone. We, we fit a need that this community needs, to clothe the needy, as Fran said. I am president this year. I've taken over an organization that's been in our city for over 60 years, and that is because of Fran Carey. And Fran Carey has been part of this community and has been involved in Needlework Guild along with many, many other organizations, and she truly is somebody to be recognized for all of her good deeds. So, on that note... Stay up here.
I have a little something here. Little something here. If you would help us unwrap it to remember the Needlework Guild by, and maybe we have a little help.
Can you please?
We're still missing something here. Wrapped this one up really well. Well, that's a nice back of a sign. What I've been doing is giving away my parking space to commend people in the community for their volunteer work. So this will be bolted down tomorrow, secure as can be, and if you choose to come down here, you have your very own VIP parking space.
I thank you so very much.
Now, I don't know if you'll come down here, but it's there to honor you nonetheless. Now, why am I giving you this? If you want to hold that for just a second.
You know, this was just supposed to be coming tonight.
You have been a timeless volunteer in our community for nearly 50 years, and a worker bee for Needlework Guild, Pathways of Hope, Children Hospital of Orange County, the PTA with your children, the First Presbyterian Church, and many other charities in town, all on a volunteer basis. And that's why I want to make an example of you. Things you've been doing are truly wonderful. Now, it's been said, the reason volunteers are not paid is not because they're worth us, it's they're priceless, and that's exactly what you are. Thank you for what you do.
I thank you so very much, and I thank you.
Can we have the Needlework people kind of join in up here?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, she could keep the secrets. We'll let her know.
Bunch of cheaters is what you are.
One, two, three. Here again, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Again, you always receive much more than you ever get, and certainly, I've received much more from my community, my complete and wholesome community. Thank you.
We're now at that point, we have public comments. How many speakers do we have, Madam Clerk?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, all right. Starting with the first one, if you haven't filled out a speaker slip, please do so, so we may correct or spell your name in a minute.
And if speakers two through seven, would please come line up along the wall behind
Mayor, Mayor Protam, council members, I'm Bob Hayden, chairman and spokesperson for Open Coyote Hills, and wanted to just share a few words tonight. Members of our group were intimately involved in securing the preservation of the Bob Ward Nature Preserve. We welcome and support the efforts to acquire additional space, open space from the development near the preserve itself, and we greatly appreciate the efforts of council, of staff, in working in collaboration and conjunction with Pacific Coast Homes, the Friends of Coyote Hills, and also Open Coyote Hills to develop a definitive plan that will lead to a resolution of this that benefits our entire community and not only just Fullerton, but the broader North Orange County, South LA County area of our great state. Thank you very much for your efforts, and anything that we can continue to do to help bring this to resolution, we are certainly willing to do.
We'll certainly let you know.
I'm sure you will.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Excuse me. Hi, I'm Davis Barber. I'm publisher of FullertonStories.com, and actually, before I get into that, as a citizen and my own business of producing video and photography, we've been doing a lot of work with the St. Jude Foundation the past month or so on their Watts Program, Walk Amongst the Stars, and it's, uh, we've been dealing with a lot of cancer patients, and their stories are really pretty incredible, and I'd really encourage everybody to take some time out, follow all of the leads and all of the contacts and mentions that have been made tonight, make contributions, step up, learn more about it, do what you can. It's, uh, it's important, very compelling information, some great stories and great people out there, so I want to give a plug for all of them. I wanted to just announce that we have our new issue of Fullerton Stories Magazine, and specifically, I want to make sure I got up here to the podium to say that we have our candidate interviews again this year. We've interviewed all but two of the City Council candidates, one of which hasn't quite come in yet. Excuse me. And we also have some school board candidates. We've had, we've had two interviews so far, and we hope to get the rest of the people in the next week or so. The videos will be published on FullertonStories.com through, until November 4th through the election, and it's just a good chance to get a feel for each candidate, what they sound like. We don't do any hard questions, really, but we do try to go down some roads where people can just share their thoughts and kind of give, give an idea of what, what they'll be like on council. The magazine itself can be found around town. We have thousands going out door-to-door tomorrow morning, and if anybody has any questions, give us a call. Uh, we're, our office is downtown, FullertonStories.com, and that's it. Thank you much.
Davis, are your candidate interviews on now?
They're on right now, yes.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
We're still missing, uh, Mayor Protam Seaborn, Seaborn, excuse me, hasn't, we haven't been able to schedule a time yet, and Bill Chafee, we haven't been able to schedule a time yet, but all the other candidates are on the same page. They're linked to from the front. We rotate, uh, we give every candidate a week on the front page, and then everybody on the same page inside, so you can just kind of pick and choose who you want to hear. Okay, thanks.
Great. Thank you. May we have the next speaker, please?
Good evening, Barry Levinson. Good evening, Council. An Orange County Weekly article by Mr. Gabriel Sanromen stated that a lawsuit filed in federal court alleges that a former Fulton Police Department detective misused his police authority in return for forced sexual acts. According to the lawsuit, Fulton Detective Ronald Baer investigated a restraining order breach on December 2012. The female victim, known as Ms. Jane Doe, had recently moved to a safe house for battered women with her young daughter to get away from abusive... women, with her young daughter to get away from an abusive ex-husband. The detective interviewed Ms. Doe at department headquarters and offered to testify on her behalf in upcoming custody hearings. After one of those custody hearings, Detective Baer and Ms. Doe went to a local restaurant where allegedly Baer asked for, quote, "sexy pictures" after making inappropriate comments about her body. The complaint reads in part, "The plaintiff felt that she had no option but to comply with the officer's request as she was by then totally dependent on him, both for the criminal investigation and the custody case involving her daughter," end quote. The alleged sexual abuse started shortly thereafter with Detective Baer at times pointing his gun at Ms. Doe's head. Baer also allegedly threatened her with comments like the following, "I am very good friends with those officers who beat Kelly Thomas to death." The complaint goes on to state that Detective Baer testified for the female victim, resulting in a five-year restraining order being issued against a relative of the female victim's ex-husband. After that, the complaint alleges Baer pointed to his sexual organ, telling the female victim that she owed him big time. Ms. Doe told her therapist at her shelter about the abuse in September 2013, and says she filed a complaint against Baer with his FPD bosses. The lawsuit alleges that not only did investigators tip off Baer, but that he turned on Doe. And at the next custody hearing, the lawsuit alleges, quote, "He testified that the plaintiff was mentally ill, was a danger to her daughter, that she was affiliated with the mafia, and that she had not been the victim of domestic abuse," end quote. A judge then denied visitation rights to her daughter. Clearly, another very disturbing lawsuit concerning not only a recent member of the Fulton Police Department, but allegations against the department and their procedures themselves. One last quick statement, I just want to say I want to pull item number three and number five. And I also want to say that I think it was very not fair to have a 10- or 15-minute presentation on Measure J and not invite somebody else who is not for it. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council, ladies and gentlemen of the audience. My name is Joan Briano. I'm the site administrator of the Fullerton Informer dot com. And they did invite someone here to speak on the other side of J. It was me. It's a billion-dollar boondoggle, the third mortgage on a college district that has been placed on the ballot at the behest of the board members. But that's not what I'm here to talk about tonight. The sign did the trick on that. I wasn't able to get this into the camera angle. I don't know which one's filming me right now, but item number one on presentations was Sharon Quirk Silva, and I was accused of being rude and obnoxious coming here and showing these. Let me tell you something, folks, abortion and sex education in our school is rude and obnoxious, if you ask my opinion. With that being said, I wanted to get into the Cancer Awareness Month and all of this discussion about being aware of cancer. Cancer is a serious problem, and it's becoming more and more prevalent. It's very difficult to prove, but nonetheless, becoming more and more ubiquitous as the population increases exponentially, and it seems like the cancer rates are keeping up with it. Wireless radiation, for some strange reason, is getting a pass. It is being administered to our children in the schools, it is being administered to our adults in the care facilities and hospitals. Wireless radiation, ladies and gentlemen, is the same classification as lead. We had a speaker here tonight talking about lead, how lead is a carcinogen. It is a Class 2B carcinogen. Wireless microwave radiation is a Class 2B carcinogen as well. The World Health Organization designated that back in 2011. I'm not making this up. So, I don't know where this disconnect is with all of the wireless proliferation and the level of denial that's taking place in our school district, and the people that are responsible for its implementation are thumbing their noses at this. The Volunteer of the Month issue, I think it's a wonderful thing. What a gracious woman we had up here. And she talked about such a wholesome community. Folks, I'm here to tell you that this community is not wholesome anymore. We have this going on, we got sex ed coming, we got forced radiation to schoolchildren, we have people being murdered by the police, people being allegedly molested by the police, we have people that have allegedly had their lives threatened by the police, and it seems like every time there's something to do with an investigation, maybe shaking down a citizen like myself, you only show up on the council days. Tuesday morning seems to be the day you like to come and ask me questions. I think that's kind of odd, but nonetheless, it doesn't really warrant much more discussion, aside from the fact that, in my opinion, the police department hasn't learned its lesson. In terms of what is going on in this city, the foundations of this community need to be shaken, they need to be woken up. We have abortion on demand, we have the molestation of children with this curriculum coming with Common Core, we have invasion of privacy, we have complicit, lackey board members that don't want to acknowledge what they're part of, and the extension has been given to them many times to do the right thing. This community is not what it used to be, ladies and gentlemen, and I would like to bring to mind the words of that woman's prayer. We have to be courageous and stand up for what is right. We can't go along to get along anymore. There's a lot on the line. The FullertonInformer dot com is here to give the other side that everybody doesn't want to tell you about. Thank you.
May we have the next speaker, please?
Richard Ware, 12-year resident. Bear with me. All right. I've been complaining about the presentations taking way too long, that you're taking away the citizens' First Amendment rights, and that we have to wait hours to speak for public comments. As long as I've been in this city, public comments has always been at 6:30, not at 8 o'clock at night. So, been complaining about that for three months, and I've been complaining about the Volunteer of the Month signs also. Mayor Chaffee, you chose to ignore and respond numerous times when I asked you about those Volunteer of the Month signs. So, you asked for what you got last month, or last meeting. I brought proof to show that Mayor Chaffee had lied about paying for the signs. Let me bring everybody up to speed here. We did Freedom of Information Act requests, asked whether or not Mayor Chaffee had paid for the Volunteer of the Month signs. We got a response back from Lucinda. Lucinda said that he didn't pay until July 31st of this year. So, for the last year and a half, he's been lying about paying for those signs. You're caught red-handed lying. And then what makes me really upset is Jan Flores stands up for him and says, "I'm the evil person. I didn't do anything wrong. He's the one that lied, okay? He got caught red-handed, and then you want to say, 'Oh, he's a nice man, he does all kinds of nice stuff for the city.'" He's a liar. And he's not the only one on this council that I got dirt on, okay? So, you better get used to it, because there's other people up here I got dirt on too. Get used to it, because I'm going to be coming, and I would be talking about you people Has nothing to do with politics. You know, I expose the other people when I... She's laughing. You know, you're a potty mouth, okay? And I expect nothing less from you, but just stupid statements and horrific statements, that's all you do. You just pick on people, and you pick on people. Well, how's it feel to be picked on right now? Okay? I think you're just as evil as him, and you're just as wrong as he is. Okay? You want to stand up for him, and you want to give him that look on your face like you've done nothing wrong. You're standing up for a liar, okay? I gave you guys all the proof. I sent you the emails, I showed you all the emails, and I proved without a doubt that he's been lying for those signs. Didn't pay for any of those signs for a year and a half. He didn't pay until July 31st. And I got the evidence to show anybody wants to see it. I don't like liars. I don't like people that when I come up here and I complain about the Volunteer of the Month signs for the last, what, three, four months, you ignore me, and you don't say nothing about it. And you wonder why I get upset. I have every right to come up here and complain and front you out for what you did. You're a liar.
May we have the next speaker, please?
Good evening, I'm Tom Babcock. Last Thursday evening, during the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum, candidates were asked about their support for the College Connector Trolley, and Mr. Chaffee, you indicated you were not in favor of it. Now, however, at the February 18th city council meeting, you not only voted to receive and file the College Connector study, you also joined Ms. Florrie and Ms. Fitzgerald in voting to authorize submission of a request to OCTA to include the College Connector Urban Circulator in the 2014 Long Range Transportation Plan as an unconstrained project, and to direct the staff to include a proposal for the next phase in planning and environmental review for a city council consideration in the 2014 CIP review process. That certainly doesn't sound as though you oppose that project. Additionally, you also stated the League of Women Voters endorsed your candidacy, which was refuted by the moderator, as the league does not endorse candidates.
I didn't say that, sir.
Yes, sir, you did.
Misunderstood.
You are the incumbent in this election, and you need to set the example for other candidates in truthfulness and ethics, and that's exactly what we expect. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We are on speaker number seven, so if number eight through... Well, now we're up to 17. Eight through 17, would please come line up?
Okay. I've got it up, but I don't see it up on the screen.
No, I gotta flip it still.
Okay. I spoke with an individual named... My name's Sean Payden, Fullerton resident. I spoke with an individual named Thomas Rubin, who is a consultant and has a lot of experience in streetcars and has been following a number of streetcar proposals throughout Orange County. I showed him, not Orange County, the entire country. I showed him the Fullerton proposal, and he was very concerned about it. He took time out of his schedule. This is free work that he did. He's willing to meet with the city council at the next meeting on October 21st. I hope he'll be willing to agendize a meeting so he can discuss this. And if you got a chance to take a look at this, I did present this to Lucinda yesterday. There's a lot of errors in this report. The errors consistently, every single error, questionable assumption or statement favors the streetcars, or makes the alternatives look worse. So, these are not random mistakes. The big item that he noticed was speed of travel. The presentation has this in detail. I'm on a timer, so I'm going to show you this later. This is what we're estimating the speed is. These are the speeds on the blue for existing rails. This is our assumptions for the Fullerton streetcar. As you can see, we're estimating that this streetcar is going to run at 50% faster than any other streetcar system around. The significance of that is the budget. If we got our estimates regarding the speed wrong, we're going to need to get additional rail lines, additional tracks. It's going to run up the operating costs every year, and the $140 million number we came up is not going to be accurate. There's other additional factual errors. We're $170 million. Understated the cost of the LA streetcar. Operating cost of the South Lake Union streetcar is about half what it actually is. Torma Link streetcar, they got the completely wrong streetcar system. And then, of course, with the buses, what they did to make the bus systems look less desirable was they only compared what are called dedicated roadway bus systems. That's when you have a bus system that has a specific road that is only for that bus line. We're not using the trolley as a dedicated system, so there's no reason to use a dedicated bus line to compare it. So, again, this is not exhaustive. There's a lot more issues. His name is Thomas Rubin. I would urge you, Mr. Chaffee, you said you're not in favor of it. This would be your opportunity. Show you're not in favor of it. Agendize placing an item for Mr. Rubin to speak to the city council at the next meeting, and agendize really discussing whether we should even proceed any further with this trolley system. One other item is the Measure J. I agree with the other speakers. If you're going to open up 10 minutes of the city council meeting for an infomercial in favor of a contested ballot measure, equal time mandates that you provide an opportunity at the next council meeting on October 21st for an opponent of Measure J to speak. I know several, if you'd like to speak to me about that. Thank you.
Thank you. May we have the next speaker, please?
Hi, folks. My name's Stephen Baxter, and I know that last week you guys talked about loitering and the homeless and parking structures, so I won't speak about that directly right now during public comments. I just want to speak about the concept of blaming others for things you bring on yourself, scapegoating. There's an awful lot of scapegoating that goes on around here, and it's directed at the homeless, and I believe it's because the homeless are not one of the factions that can donate considerable amounts of money to your campaign. They're not the Police and Fire Association, they're not the Chamber of Commerce, they're not the developers, but yet they get the brunt of anything negative that happens in downtown. I know that Dan Hughes walked out when I walked up. Last time, he turned his back on me when I walked up. But the fact is that the homeless commit less violent crimes in the city than members of his own force. There have been less homeless people charged with assault on women, or accused of assault on women, than officers that wear this uniform. I would like to find out what happened with these camping tickets that we talked about a year ago. I met with Whitaker, I met with Jan Florrie, I met with the city attorney, I met with Doug Chaffee, and I asked that to be put on the agenda, because my argument was that they're not going to solve anything. We're just adding one more noose around the neck of homeless people, one more anvil that prevents them from rejoining society. I know from those I've spoken to that when they're arrested for failure to go to Santa Ana and pay their fine for these camping tickets, they're often arrested on the same spot where they were ticketed. That means nothing changed. It didn't drive anybody out of town. In fact, we found the least effective way possible to house a homeless person at $133 a day in our jails. So, I would like to request that information is provided. How many camping tickets have been given? Of those, how many went to warrant? Of those, when they went to warrant, how many were arrested? And if arrested, did the arrests take place on the same spot that the ticket was issued? That's what I would like, that's what I've asked for, that's what I have not received. And to the people that complained about homeless panhandling, there's not a member on our DAS who has not panhandled themselves when they ran for office. And there's not a single officer that's not a member of the union that hasn't called residents in the city asking for donations. What's the only difference between a homeless person asking for money, or a cop asking for money, or a politician asking for money? They're hungry. You're not.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Chaffee, and members of the council. I'm a Navy veteran. My wife and I have lived in Fullerton for the last six years, and we love it. As residents, we appreciate the little things...
What is your name?
My name's Alexander Santana.
Thank you.
Sorry. As residents, we appreciate the little things our city has to offer. It is nice to volunteer on weekend projects that not only help us come together as a community, but it also helps the community to provide in us with better and safer parks and for our families. Last Saturday, for example, we, and when I say we, I use that term loosely, you, Palet, your wife, the Fullerton, some of the Fullerton firemen, some of our missionaries, some business owners, my wife and myself, just to name a few, were together planting trees, flowers, mulching the flower plants, and we got sweaty doing the physical labor. Despite all the negativity, all the negative things happening around us, that was a nice thing to see and do. I just want to publicly thank you for having this type of events. We not only come together for good cause, but we actually do something nice for us and for our city. On the same note, I represent a nonprofit organization called Vets Journey Home. We do weekend retreats for veterans who are facing difficulty reintegrating with themselves. And notice that I said "with themselves," not with society. After September 11, I knew I had to answer the call to serve my country. Right after I signed up, I was given my first set of orders. I was directed to attend a very intense training, which is called Boot Camp. We all know it. There, I was trained with the intention of breaking the civilian and turning me into a soldier. Trust me when I say they do a really good job doing so. The only problem was, after 10 years of service, having fulfilled my obligation, there was no such a reversal training that will break the soldier in me and turn me back into a Then we faced lots of difficulties readjusting. Unfortunately, there are very few sources that tackle these types of issues and really strive to make a difference on veterans, on a veteran's life, and that's what Vets Journey Home is all about. I would like to call upon yourself, the members of the council, and the citizens of Fullerton to take action in supporting this type of organizations. It could be either by donating, volunteering to staff a weekend retreat, or implementing programs that really will emphasize on assisting a veteran who is transitioning. Now, that is major, will be such an honorable thing to have in our city. In the next year or so, we are expecting a tsunami of returning veterans. How are we planning to provide them with honorable service after they have served us all? I commend you for putting together these community events, and respectfully ask you to think about the brave men and women who already serve us. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you for your service to our country and to our city. May we have the next speaker, please?
Three. You do? This is just the beginning. Oh, no, that's not me. Okay. Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Tony Packes, and I'm a 10-year veteran, member of city council, Fullerton, excuse me. We are in a drought, a real drought, accelerated by a heat... We are in a drought, a real drought, accelerated by a heat wave. What are we doing? Why not be proactive? Why aren't we holding public forums on how to reduce water usage? Why aren't we holding public forums on how to reuse gray water? I have great information from Dave and Don about using gray water, but I think the public needs to be motivated and given directions on how to do this. And weren't we supposed to get rid of that grass out in front of City Hall a long time ago? Oh, well. Next, we had a great open house for Spot Coffee months ago. What's the status of the opening? What's holding it up? I mean, just, I saw some activity a little while ago, then there's nothing going on. That's, you know, I mean, that's the business. Aren't we trying to get businesses in this city? And my pet peeve for today, if you didn't think those were pet. With the new distribution system for the OC register paper, I have not received a paper since Saturday. And I'm not alone. 30,000 other people. And I find out the reason why they changed the distribution system. They owe, the OC register owes the LA Times $1.5 million because they were using the Times carriers to deliver the OC register. So now we have no paper. I know you can't do anything about, but I feel better now.
I don't.
I know. Thank you very much.
Maybe you should write a letter to the editor of the register.
Oh, God. Letters, Twitter-
But who's going to see it?
Yeah, everything.
And I just paid my 25 bucks for the next two months. I'm really furious about it.
You only paid $25? You don't get it seven days a week, do you?
Thursday to Sunday.
Okay. Well, crazy.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members, city attorney and city manager. My name is Don Ratzla. My wife and I are longstanding residents of the city of Fullerton, taxpayers, voters, residents in North Fullerton. Tonight, I want to call your attention to an item that was on the agenda, a tentative item that was removed on tonight's agenda, called the Watts Development at Laurel and Mark Allen. This is a proposal which will basically require a zone change and it's for the development of an island of incompatibility architecturally and culturally. It's private property and it'll be a high-rise, high-density development within an existing community in the city of Fullerton. I believe it's a test case, probably. It's the only development that I know of that is putting a high-density, high-rise population within an existing community rather than on an arterial byway or a major street. This is disturbing to the community members, of which I am one, and I'm here tonight just to make sure that you don't forget about us. Watts, and my understanding is that it will be re-agended after the election. An interesting delaying strategy indeed by the Watts administrators who are well-versed in how to manipulate items in the city administration. The Fullerton Plan I want to address. Your city council is a gatekeeper for the Fullerton Plan. The Fullerton Plan was developed in 2012 or reiterated with major inputs from community members, business members, residents, and it holds that any development that goes into an existing established community should be compatible both architecturally, culturally, and within public property-wise. This goes against the city plan. I want to challenge you that when this gets back on the agenda, look out for your voting public. The people that put you in office protected their investment denied the zone change. We don't wish, we're not against development as an R1 community. The community is majorly in favor of that. I see I'm out of time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. May we have the next speaker, please?
Hello, my name is Coral Rae. I work at Salon L'Jean. I live and work in the city of Fullerton. Thank you for hearing me tonight. I would like to speak on behalf of the salon and the owner of Salon L'Jean and all my coworkers, and I would like to thank you so much for such a fast response on helping to clean up the parking structure on Woolshire. I can't even tell you what a difference it's made. It's made a lot of people in that area upset with the salon. We get flipped off now almost daily and there's still a lot that needs to be done. There still needs to be some cleanup in the parking structure, although it is much cleaner and much better. And we just wanted to say thank you from the salon, everybody as a whole. We're very, very happy. Our clients have noticed it was just a huge difference. That parking bench removed made just all the world of difference. They moved to new locations now, but at least it's not right in front and our clients don't have to walk through it anymore. So we really do appreciate what you've done and we appreciate the police department and you guys just listening and actually doing something. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Coral, are you saying that some of your clients are being challenged because of the-
Oh, yeah.
Like what's happening?
They get flipped off, literally.
As they're walking to your salon?
Yes, and leaving.
Because they're mad because they can't-
They ride by on their bicycles, they walk by, they flip off people in the windows, which, you know, it's just, it's not about homeless or people like that are less fortunate. It's about bad behavior, I think. When people are not urinating, vomiting, doing feces or whatever, drugs in the stairwells of the other parking structure, it's not about the good people that just walk in and out. It's about taking care of those people that I believe that's just bad behavior. That's just wrong. You don't do that. And we would not have even gotten up in arms had they not been doing this. And it's not just homeless, it's the drunks, it's the bad element, the people that just bring that awful stuff and it stinks really bad in there, you know? I mean, I'm sure anybody who's walked through there has seen their bits and pieces of whatever they see, but flipping off an innocent person, I mean, they flipped me off, I'm like, yeah, right back at you, whatever. But to flip off a client who doesn't even know what the heck is going on.
I just wanted to get an idea of what was happening. Thank you.
That's it.
Ma'am, I'd like to ask you, we have, yes. We have at the Muggenthaler, a bunch of young ladies who are doing a, if I say this right, quinceaños or something like that?
Quinceañera.
Okay. I'll let you say it. Thank you. And Salon L'Jean, I believe, did a wonderful job helping fix them up, doing their hair and everything.
Yes, they do something every, they do the Walk with the Stars, they do cut-a-thons, they're doing a buzz cut thing for the fire department. They're involved in the community and have been ever since we moved to that location, I think it was like 17, 18 years ago. So they're always giving back to the community and trying to do things. We do the Toys for Tots drive, the food drive. We do everything. We pick families that are less fortunate during the holidays and donate everything we can to them. So it's not like we're not aware that there's a problem with less fortunate, but it's just about bad behavior. I mean, and that's just the bottom line, so.
It was wonderful what you did for those young ladies.
Well, thank you very much. I'll tell everybody.
May we have the next speaker, please?
As you know, this is Breast Cancer Month, and before I begin, I'd like to take this opportunity to remember my mother. Mr. Mayor, and honorable board members, my name is M.J. Noor. I'm a candidate for the Fullerton Joint Union High School Board of Trustees. I am the only candidate for this position that has a child in school. I believe that the parents must be respected and informed. There are many changes in education that face our Fullertonian students of tomorrow and members of this community. I am concerned about student safety. I'm concerned about the common core. I'm concerned about the extensive data collection on students and parents. I'm concerned, as you just heard, our students are not ready for college and there are 26,000 new applicants to the community college. Parents are asking why? Why are our students leaving high school not ready for college? Why are there 26,000 students applying to the junior college this year alone? I am the founder of the Honors Parent Association and have been involved with our schools for over 15 years in many parent capacities. I have the knowledge, the passion, and experience to serve as your school board trustees, and I thank you for this time.
Thank you. May we have the next speaker, please?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Paul Kratzser. I would like to say a few words about Mayor's Service Day. I live at Rancho Fullerton, which is a senior community, about 350 residents located near the DMV, and I write the monthly newsletter there and I have the task of informing Rancho Fullerton residents about events like Mayor's Service Day, like the Police Department Open House, like guest speakers from the mayor's office, from the police and fire departments and so on. My wife and I had the pleasure and opportunity to participate in Mayor's Service Day last week, last weekend. We rehabilitated Olive Park, which was a lot of fun. My wife and I were on the crew that refreshed the old sign out in front of the park, so now the sign is a lot more attractive than it used to be. It was very enjoyable hanging out with the mayor and his family and volunteers from the police and fire department and the park and rec department. And I hope that in the future, when we have other opportunities like that, like Love Fullerton and other similar opportunities, I hope that we will be able to have more volunteers from Rancho Fullerton and other places. Thank you.
Thank you for your great help and congratulations on your recent marriage.
Hi, Jeff Levine. Hello, council and everybody here tonight. 44-year resident. I'm homeless. I don't always get work. Sometimes I do. When I don't, I have to panhandle for money and eat and survive. I do it with a sign most of the time and it doesn't say, it doesn't state, you know, on it that I'm asking for anything for a reason, so the police don't give me a ticket for panhandling. There's a lot of us out here that do that for survival, to eat, because we don't believe in stealing from anybody or burglarizing like these idiots do all over the parking structures and people's cars. Those are the ones the police need to go after, you know? People are smoking dope and, you know, doing that spice stuff or whatever the hell it is, walking around like a bunch of zombies scaring people. You know, I see it all the time, every single day, day in, day out. I'm out here all the time on the streets, unfortunately, until I get off. Luckily for me, where I camp, it's private property because for the longest time, I was getting just moved around from spot to spot and it's tiring and I'm worn out. Not to say that your officers, Dan, weren't nice with me, they were. I'm not going to lie about that. I'm very neutral with this whole situation and until these shelters start popping up, hopefully soon, in the near future, that, you know, that's why we're dealing with this still and it's not going to go away. Soon as those shelters in Santa Ana, Anaheim, wherever they're going to put them up or wreck them, it's going to ease the problem a lot, a whole lot. It's going to get a lot of us off the streets, it's going to get a lot of us work, which we need. I've been stuck out here for well over, about, well over two years and I don't like it. It's not fun. You know, so, but I'm very neutral, very neutral with this whole situation, meaning I'm not going to, I'm not taking sides. I love everybody, you know? I try to be the best I can when I'm doing my thing. Probably the reason why the police don't mess with me because I clean up. Some of these guys, they, some, not all, you know, don't clean up, they make a mess. You know, I look after some of the businesses, actually. I see people smashing, you know, their fists against the windows and as far as the ladies, thank you.
Thank you, sir. May we have the next speaker, please? Madam Clerk, is this the last speaker? Thank you.
Yes, I'm Bill Chafee. I was born in Fullerton in 1951. I mentioned part of my platform is I want to be an advocate for the people with disabilities and many, if not most, people with disabilities have had problems with misdiagnosis. I had a bunch of different labels, but when I was 37 and a half, I finally received a diagnosis of cerebral palsy. There actually were some doctors that asked me if I have cerebral palsy before I received the diagnosis and when I first asked that, I didn't know what the term meant. I've done some research on it since then, you know, since I received the label. So that's one issue that I'm quite sensitive to is the problem misdiagnosis. And I think that's probably the case with a lot of homeless people, that they've probably had a whole bunch of different labels and some of the labels may be correct and some may be incorrect, but as far as rehabilitation goes, you know, some of them just, some of them are able to work and need to be hooked up to the right job and some of them may need some sort of help to, you know, a place to start is getting the right diagnosis. Getting the wrong diagnosis, you know, could mean, might even mean joining the wrong support group or putting people in embarrassing situations or it can, you know, sometimes it's harmful and sometimes it's, you know, it's no big deal, but, you know, misdiagnosis is often a chronic problem. On the issue of Wi-Fi, I think I would have voted on the side of caution. I don't think that, I think there is, I haven't seen a lot of the research, but I think there is reason to put the brakes on putting more Wi-Fi, at least the exposure levels need to be monitored. There are ways of measuring it and I don't think people have any idea what the exposure levels in the schools are, but if there's a whole bunch of people in the room using wireless devices, then obviously the effect is going to be multiplied. Thank you.
Thank you. That completes our public comments and at this point, we're going to move on to city council and staff communications. Mr. City Manager, do you have any response or comments you'd like to make in light of the public comments?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to confirm, items three and five were requested to be pulled. I did want to make a couple notes on the public comments. I believe Mr. Packes was referring to the drip coffee development that's going at the corner of Harbor and Chapman. All of the plans have been approved. There were some delays. The ownership changed architects and so that caused some delays on their side, but we have fast-tracked that project and they are, we're looking forward for construction starting in the next couple of weeks. You'll see some staging happen pretty quick out there, so good news on that one. And just to confirm, one of the speakers, and Mayor, you mentioned it earlier, the Watt project or Laurel project that's been referred to is tentatively scheduled for November 18th at the request of the developer. And then the last item, I'd ask Mr. Curial to comment on the status of the grass at Police Department and City Hall and give us an update on that and where we're going with that. So that's all I have.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Hugo Curial, Parks and Recreation Department. Currently Parks and Rec and Public Works are working together to develop some alternatives for- for the substitute of the front lawn here at City Hall. Just in some of the last meetings we've had with Public Works, the water has already been turned down. The grass has been somewhat resilient, but we are starting to see some of the stress levels, but that's fine, because we do plan on coming up with some solutions that will be able to replace that lawn. One of the things we want to be cognizant about is that we want to be able to acknowledge that there's some nice architecture out there, so we'll be trying to do some nice solutions that will still do that, but yet with a much more water-conscious approach. Some of the things that we are considering is obviously some succulents or drought tolerant plants. If you notice, the library expansion just recently implemented a much more water-conscious garden on the, just on the west side of City Hall, so we would be borrowing some of those ideas, some of those themes, and likely with the Police Department with the succulents, and also, we think we could integrate that and come up with a good solution. As most of you know, MWD provides for, I think it's a $2 a square foot rebate for every piece of turf, for every square foot of turf that should remove, so I think we could realize, see savings here on the front lawn of about $22,000. So, that would be quite a chunk that could go back into the reinvestment of something that's much more water-tolerant. So, with that, we're going to plug forward with a little bit of our Parks and Recreation assistance with Public Works. We'll put something together and a concept for review.
So, Mayor, I should add that Mr. Curial's former, prior career was landscape architect, and so this is all being done in-house and with the Public Works staff as well, and I believe the water's turned off at the Police Department at this point, so it'll be a matter of removing the turf at that location, and then confirming with MWD the plant material that can qualify for the rebate for the front lawn.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Mayor Protem, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yes. I received an email notifying that the Orange County Assessor's Office is offering a, essentially a readjustment on property taxes, that if you've had a, the land, the building, or structures have any sort of damage as a result of misfortune or calamity, they don't go into details, but I would envision earthquake among those. And if you have more than $10,000 in damage, or overall $10,000 damage, you can qualify to get your property taxes readjusted. Don't know that that works out well if you've been living on a property tax in the '70s, but for those of us that bought in about 2005 or 2006, it might be worth looking into. Also, at the last meeting, instead of asking for a specific audits on certain funds, I was told that I'd be provided some financial documents. I haven't received those yet. I'm still looking forward to those, or an audit. At this point, I think maybe the audit would be quicker. Also, Mr. Baxter's request for statistics regarding those camping tickets, I think that's pretty reasonable. I don't know what the holdup would be on that. I'd be interested to see what those numbers look like. And lastly, at Lena Park, I was, visited that last night, and it looks like we have some serious brown grass out there. It looks like we had turned off the water pretty extensively. My understanding with staff was gearing towards a 20% reduction in water usage out there, and I think after, year after year of repeated reductions, you get down to such a low amount that you try to do 20%, that means turning off the water completely, so. Our city manager assured me it was back on and that they were trying to get it reinvigorated. I hope that, you know, we look at all of our parks equally and balance it out. I don't see the same issues at Lena Park that I see at Hillcrust, or out in front, or at the ball fields, or at the sports complex, so it's not necessarily, it looks like we're applying the same logic to all the fields equally. And I think that will conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Sure, thank you. I want to say I joined many Fullerton residents at the recent Pathways to Hope fundraiser. I wanted to congratulate them on another successful event. Every year for over 20 years, Cynthia Peck at Angelo and Vincis has donated the cost of the entire fundraising dinner, so that Pathways could come and raise money for their important work with the homeless in our community. And so I wanted to publicly thank Cynthia and congratulate Pathways on such a great event. And I know I was joined there by Mayor Chafee as well. I believe Mayor Protem Seaborn was there for a little while, and so it was just, it was a great event. I also wanted to bring your attention to an upcoming community event on October 19th. The Women's Club of, the Women's Club of Fullerton is hosting Rocktober, and that's going to be up at the McEnthaler Center. There's a clothing drive in the morning, and then there's a big family fair and concert in the afternoon, so I'd encourage you all, if you're in town that day, to bring your kids and come participate in that. I also wanted to ask Mr. Hoppy to give us an update on the Commonwealth Euclid Road Reconstruction Project. I went through that intersection the other day with no safety cones, and it looked beautiful, so tell us what's going on with that.
Thank you very much. Don Hoppy, Director of Public Works. The roadway's essentially resurfaced. It's been cat-tracked, which basically means the contractor puts little marks on the pavement where we're eventually going to put legends and striping. City's traffic engineer has reviewed them, and I believe he approved them this evening, which means they'll start the final painting either tomorrow or Thursday. It's essentially done, other than the water valves and manholes have to be adjusted to grade, so for the next week or two, there'll be some spot congestion where they adjust the manholes to grade. Everything has to be brought up so that it's, that we can find the manholes and the water valves when we need them. But essentially, it's going to be 100% complete. Also, the work on Yorba Linda Boulevard, although you didn't ask about it, I'll volunteer anyway, that'll be done around the end of the month. That's our project. It's, everyone thinks it's placenta, but it's actually us and your dollars hard at work. The Phase III of Berkeley is well underway. It should be completed within the month. Richmond is actually completed. That was a sewer main project, along with street reconstruction north of Chapman, so we're moving along very well on all the CIP projects.
That's great. You know, I, especially on the Commonwealth Euclid project, it has, it's a little, in my mind, it's a little, the inconvenience has been a little different than the other reconstruction projects, because it has drastically affected so many businesses. So, I would love to work on doing some kind of grand reopening of that road. Let's not walk off the road to do it, but maybe we could work with some of the businesses there, perhaps since it's almost Halloween, to do some kind of trick-or-treating that gets people into all those businesses, but I would love for the city to reach out to that community and see if we can't partner together to let the community know that they can go down there and frequent those businesses.
I'll get together with the city manager and probably Hugo, and we'll see if we can put together some sort of event.
That's great. Oh, good. I think that'd be great.
Good suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks. And then the last thing, Mr. Mayor, that I wanted to bring up was that, you know, each of us on this council has the opportunity to directly appoint commissioners to city commissions, and there is a process, however, where this council can review and sometimes remove people from those commissions. I think that this process should only be invoked in extreme circumstances. And unfortunately, because of a recent incident where Barry Levinson, a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, publicly berated and intimidated a member of the public in the lobby of this building after an agenda item didn't go his way, I need to agendize for the next meeting removal of Mr. Levinson from the Parks and Recreation Committee. I've held off for a while doing this, because I was hopeful Mr. Whitaker, who appointed him, would ask for his resignation, but seeing that that hasn't come, I would like to agendize this for the next meeting. I just don't think we can condone bullying behavior from our public officials.
Thank you. It shall be agendized. Mr. Whitaker, any comments? Sir, please sit down. Mr. Whitaker, do you have any comments?
Yes, I believe that any time a public body, as we near an election, special care must be taken to not overly politicize the actions of that legislative body, and at times when there are issues that this council hasn't taken a position on, I do believe a couple of the recommendations earlier were certainly in order. One is that it would be good to agendize an opposition to the NOCCB bond matter for the next meeting.
I think that's a good idea. We'll do that, if we can find an appropriate speaker.
Also, in the interest of, and I will say, one good thing about politicizing public meetings is sometimes that's about the only way you get down to the real issues and really talk policy. So, I do appreciate that in that exchange, sometimes we get down to pay dirt on policy matters. As was suggested earlier, the draft Fullerton College Connector, this body has received only a presentation which leaned very strongly in the support direction. So, I would also like to agendize that discussion with Mr. Rubin for the next meeting.
And who is Mr. Rubin?
He's the expert who has concerns with that study, and he will share those concerns with the council at no cost to the council.
Okay. Thank you.
And would you be willing to support that, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I'll take it under consideration, and we'll see. You may have a second person.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it will be on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Seaborn. The issue with Ms. Fitzgerald wanting to play games with people's directed points on this council, I think that's a very slippery slope to begin traversing, and if we want to discuss bullying, I think every time, as they've always said, when you point the finger, you have three pointing back at you. I believe that there are instances where tempers do flare and where there are differences of opinion. It's our goal as the legislative body to de-escalate those situations and not to escalate and invite more. One of the problems that I've seen over the last few years is as we've had very long sessions of public input during very heated council meetings, are that the actions of the council itself tend to idle, tend to either increase that, it creates really more of what it is that you claim that you don't want. I believe that level-headed discussion of the issues and respecting differences of opinion, even when they're wide differences, this council should have as its goal to de-escalate those type of motions and not to try to play a political game with them. So, I do resent your motion in this, in this matter, Councilmember Fitzgerald, and I think it's heading us in a very unfortunate direction.
Anything further, Ms. Whitaker?
There was, there were a few positive things, but in having to respond with the council's input here, I'm afraid I've lost those. That was a very nice event at the McEnthaler for the quinceanera. Those girls were really, it was a very refreshing event and dinner, and very positive, so I do believe that this council can continue to address things constructively, or we can play the political game much more. Everyone who does come and speak to the council does have a right to do so. I will always support that right, even if you're taking shots at me, because that's the only way that we're going to get honesty on both sides of the equation. It can't, all of the power and initiative can't come one direction. It really has to be an exchange. So, I appreciate everyone who came this evening to give their opinions. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Florrie?
Yes. On September the 23rd, I attended a fracking oil and gas forum over at Cal State Fullerton, and it was an information-sharing event. It is not the end-all and be-all concerning the subject of acidization and fracking in this area, but I think that there was enough information shared that it mollified people's concerns about it, at least in the short term. The panel was selected by both people who support the continued oil drilling in our, in the north part of Orange County, as well as those people who oppose these processes of fracking and acidization, and what we got were the facts, to the extent that they're known by known experts in the field. That is a really good starting point, and there were over 500 people that attended it. I went to a reception that started at 4:30, I think the forum began at 6:00, and there were already people wrapped around the auditorium to attend this. So, when our citizens are concerned about a subject, they do come out to get information and be informed about it. There is a second event that I would like to publicize, and that has to do with a women's leadership forum that we'll be having over at the community center on November the 13th. I'm going to mention it again until the event actually happens, but it is cosponsored. Jennifer and I are sponsoring it with the Women's Club of Fullerton, and it will be held November the 13th, which is a Thursday, at 5:00 PM. The event is free to anybody who wants to attend. This will be the 10th anniversary, and it is very, very well-received in the community. With respect to Councilmember Fitzgerald's request that we agendize the removal, the possible removal of a person on our Parks and Recreation Committee, I do support that as well. I have served on this council for 10 years, and I have during that entire time have not experienced one instance where there was even a breath of a claim that a member of the public had been intimidated by a member of a commission because of their views held about a certain issue. Tonight, I think we've seen a perfect example of intimidation with big signs being held up very close to speakers. I consider that not only rude, but it's discourteous, and that is not what this city is all about, and that's what Fullerton, Fullerton is not about that either. I think that this council should consider some rules. The people who held up the signs have a perfect right to do that, but they can't do it in such a way that they intimidate and bully people who come up here and speak. It would be my suggestion that the signs be, that if people want to have signs, that they put them in the back of the room and hold them up back there, that they not be crowding our speakers, so they intimidate their speech. I think that has a chilling effect, and I think that that circumscribes people's comments. I also don't like the idea of members of the public coming up here and calling people on the council liars. Again, discourteous, rude behavior. There are more civil ways of saying, saying that, but you're not garnering any respect from this council by doing that.
Sorry. Sure, this is council time to speak. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, anyway, and then finally, one last thing, maybe I should be talking to the city manager about this, but it occurs to me that every time I come to City, City Hall during the week, we have those five spaces that are just sitting there, and it seems to me that there ought to be a way of covering the signs up so that the public can park there during the week, and maybe the covers come off on city council days, because parking is coming at a premium these days, and there are some times when the parking spaces are being used more than at other times, and it just seems like it would open up five spaces to put covers over our council signs on non-council days. Just a suggestion. I don't know if the rest of the council supports that, but I think that would be an easy fix. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. You said a lot.
You always say that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, could we pull number six? I forgot to ask for that.
Well, it's my turn to comment. I am not endorsed by the League of Women Voters. It's silly to even suggest that. They never endorse candidates. I am endorsed by the League of, Orange County League of Conservation Voters because of my longtime support of Coyote Hills. There are many wonderful things that have happened since the last meeting. On November, on September 20, I attended a firefighter's promotion event at Station Number One, and so congratulation to all those firefighters who were promoted, and in recognition of their promoted promotion, they were thoroughly doused with water. It's a lot, a lot of fun. Also, on that same day, we had a toaster learning at the Fullerton Arboretum. This is the 10th year that event is going on, and they've now exceeded raising $1 million for the Fullerton School District. And we've had a wonderful time at Olive Park on the 27th, cleaning it up. We had volunteers come from so many different places. Some have been mentioned, and we also had a contingent led by the Student Body President of Cal State Fullerton, who came out with a group, and the many local businesses that helped sponsor the event by helping to fray the cost. Really a wonderful event. by helping to fray the cost, really a wonderful event. And we had Fullerton on court, again, at the arboretum, sponsored by Rotary South. And they benefit, I think they must have raised $80,000, $90,000, a great event, a lot of people. And I think the benefactors are the Boys and Girls Club and also the arboretum, and depending on how much money they actually did raise, perhaps some other charities. And I was pleased to be at the Pathway of Hope Dinner. The, if I say this right, quinceanera is very special because it features young ladies who are in shelters, and they're getting special care, and they don't have anything else, and it's a special day for them where they have their makeup done, their hair done, and special clothes, and they're given, among other things, special lessons, and dancing and other things. It was a pretty heartrending event, it was very, very special. Then we had just recently the Maple Reunion Dinner. That's a group of people who attended Maple School from way back. I mean, 60 years ago, we found some people who come to that, and it's a very special group that bonds together, and they raise money, which they make available to current students at Maple to help them go on and further their education. There are so many fabulous things going on in this city, and I'm sorry, we have some sour ones to report on as well. At this point, if there's nothing further, by way of comment from council, we've been going for more than two hours, we're going to take a 10-minute break.
My fault. Let's all please find a seat so we continue with our meeting. We're now at the consent calendar, we've had a request for several items to be polled. Those are items three, five, did I hear a third one? And six. I'll move the balance. Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor can indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, we're moving on to item three, use of city parking structure. I don't know who asked that be polled, but whoever it was.
Mr. Levinson.
Can you start again? Thank you. Good evening, Barry Levinson. We learned on September 16th, mainly from business owners and employees, that the downtown city-owned parking structures had some problems. The problems reported reportedly were of excrement, urine, used condoms, needles, found throughout the parking structures. What I didn't hear was a problem about, specifically about loitering. The problems that were discussed were all problems that if the police department were to catch somebody in the act of doing any of those things, is currently against the law, and they could take action. My point is that the additional powers given to the police department, to me, are totally unnecessary. And the woman from Lausanne, Lausanne proved the point by saying that things are much better. The law has not passed. What changed? I'll tell you what changed. Probably another cleaning crew came in, more cleaning, more police patrols, and that they could have done without more police power. But instead of doing that, I found it very interesting on the 16th, that there was no discussion about, well, how often do you patrol the city parking structures? Police chief, use. How often, Mr. Hoppy, does your public work people or cleaning crews go through and clean? No discussion about that, but you just willingly gave the police department, who basically, and the cleaning crews, who obviously now are doing a better job without the additional power. So what are you doing? You took away our rights. Loitering, really? You can arrest somebody? Based upon what happened tonight? I believe that I could be easily arrested if I just was standing in the parking lot, because all this new law says is that a police officer has to say, give his verbal word. Doesn't have to give a written citation, just says he warned me once, and then can arrest me. So that means anybody in this city, or visiting this city, if a police officer doesn't like you, could arrest you and put you in handcuffs and throw you in jail. That's what you've just done. I think that's horrible. You know, someone once said, you know, and also, let's talk about, we have Ramos, Cincinnati, Wolf, Hampton, Craig, Rincon, Bear, all former and current police officers. Do you really think it's a good idea to give people like that more power and control over us? I don't think so. Do you, Dan Hughes? I don't think so. Someone once said, "The best way to take control over people and control them utterly is to take a little of their freedom at a time, to erode rights by a thousand tiny and imperceptible reductions. In this way, the people will not see those rights and freedoms being removed, until past the point at which these changes cannot be reversed." By the way, that somebody who wrote that was Adolf Hitler. Thank you.
May we have the next speaker, please, if there are any more on this item?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. This is Jill Embriano, and the site administrator of the Fullerton Informer dot com. This issue with the parking structures, I think the problem is solved. Maybe some heads should roll in terms of employment status or disciplinary measures with the people that failed to maintain those facilities that were built and paid for with my tax money. And law enforcement should be, I don't know how, well, it's involved in disciplinary proceedings, but if my wife was, you know, somebody was harassing my wife when she's getting out of her car in her nice little skirt and her high heels, I'd be pretty upset. I don't know what happened over there, but you folks came back with the wrong solution. The First Amendment is something that people died barefoot- The First Amendment is something that people died barefoot in the snow and blood to death for, folks. That's why that flag is red, white, and blue. I've said this before, and I'll say this again. This is an encroachment, if not a direct attack on the First Amendment because it defines a public place. It actually defines the use of a public place in a way that's really never been done before. And I don't know how you can push this through. You need to strike that language out of there. Real simple solution, folks, and I put that on the Fullerton Informer dot com as a solution to this problem. You have created a Las Vegas Boulevard casino environment without the casinos. You've got everything from drugs, you've got drunkenness, you've got frat boys doing tricks, people doing all kinds of just preposterous behavior. And yet you have these people running businesses that I like to call liquor peddlers that are actually running a net loss for the city in terms of the sales tax revenue that they bring in, if you itemize that alongside the policing costs that are associated with these businesses being in existence. We need to solve this problem by installing pay-as-you-go parking with merchant validation. And I suggest that the council agendaize a way in which they allocate some sort of a business franchise tax on these establishments that are making tons of dough by doping up and boozing up our young people and getting them to get in all kinds of trouble so the police department can have their way with them and escalate routine traffic stops, possibly felonies, and increase the revenue for the building over on Berkeley. It's all a very big predatory system. There's a very simple solution like Anaheim does. They have the pay-as-you-go merchant validation with good security. I don't know why you put $10 or $15 million parking structures together without surveillance cameras. I don't know how this turned into, you know, the Union Plaza Hotel in a 1975 Kojak Telly Savalas movie. I really don't understand how it's gotten to this point. The First Amendment is so important, folks, because what is going on, and what I've alleged, is the sterilization of schoolchildren. Now we have Planned Parenthood moving into the schools. We have our candidates that we enshrine that they embrace in these so-called virtues. And all of a sudden, there's this attempt to squelch our free speech, and it's absolutely despicable what is going on in terms of the direction of this country. I hate to think that this council is going to go forward this measure as it is written. I believe it needs to be revisited with language removed. Thank you.
Is there another speaker on this topic, Mr. Pakic?
How do I follow that? Hi, my name is Tony Pakic. I have now figured out I'm a resident of Fullerton. In reading, reviewing the ordinance the other day, it mentions Chapter 108 penalty provisions and administrative citation 1.10. Would somebody like to explain to me what that means? And also, I realize we'll probably put up signs that tell people what's going on. Are the signs going to say, you know, ordinance, I mean, Chapter 108 penalty provision and administrative citation 1.1? Or are we actually going to say fines, what the fine is? Because, you know, people react to money. If you say, okay, if you're loitering here or something like here, you're going to be fined $75 or $100. Let's do that. If you're going to do this, do it right. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pakic. Anyone else care to comment on this ordinance? Yes, thank you.
Hello, I'm back. In response to what the gentleman that spoke first said about rights being involved, what about my rights as a taxpaying citizen who literally has to walk through all this stuff? The things that were brought up about the loitering, they were brought up at the meeting. And my friend spoke about how the loitering does affect when you have to step over someone. I want the police to be able to remove that person or tell him to leave and, you know, just get out of there because people have to walk over you. When it rains, there's probably 30 to 40 people on the second level camping out. I don't like it. I don't want to go out there when they're all having their little thing. And they do, believe me, we've all had to deal with it that work there. I don't like it. I don't want it there. It's not just the vomiting from the bars and the drunks and stuff like that, but it is the urine and the doing their business in the structure. If the police have the right to tell them, please move along, and they don't move along, I want them to be able to say, here is your citation, or here's your ticket for, move. You just need to go. Right after the meeting, you removed the park bench, which was so great. And as I said, I wanted to thank you for all of your help in doing that and making it happen. And it was, it is so much better. But what they did was they just moved down the street. The first day that the bench was removed, they had no bench to sit on, so they sat directly in front of the salon, in front of a window, and did a drug deal. That I witnessed while walking by, I backed up and said, are you doing a drug deal? Should I go get the policeman that was parked literally on, across the street from the church where they do their handing out of the food and stuff? The drug deal transpired. I said, you need to leave. We don't want this here anymore. I'm tired. I mean, I'm literally putting myself at risk by even speaking because I'm going to be on the TV saying how I feel. That's where the flipping off, and they know that it's us saying this. Well, right now, I really don't care. Who knows that I'm saying this? I don't want this taking place in front of my business, which occurs in the parking structure, around the parking structure. I want the police hands untied. I want them to be able to do their job. I want more of them back in the city. And I'm getting all fired up, but I'm very passionate about this. And all these things were brought up at the last meeting. So I just want to make that clear for that man. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more speakers on this item? One more.
Once again, if you guys need somebody to patrol or hire security, I'm right here, ready and willing. I'd probably be the best person to do it. I know all the street people. I know who's who, you know, blah, blah, blah. So if you guys ever need somebody to do that, I'm right here. I'm not going anywhere. And with what the lady said about, you know, the people doing drug deals in front of her salon and whatnot, you know, I see that like all around, especially, you know, up the street, by Starbucks, all around. It's just not, it's not just there. And it's, and we can't single out one group of people doing it, you know, it's, that's everywhere. Now, I don't know if they're, are they hanging out right in front of her sto, are they hanging out right in front of your store? Because that's, that's, yeah. Well, then, I don't know, if I was you, I would, I don't know, it's a hard call. But if I was an owner, a business owner like her, I would like have some cameras or, I don't know, signs help sometimes, but what can you do? You know, you get a bunch of knuckleheads hanging out and stuff. But I see a lot of those, you know, guys hanging out all over the place. And, you know, I can understand and relate with her being that she has a business to run. And I'd be, you know, kind of pissed off, too, you know? But the parking structures, most that I've seen, especially in LA, have armed security right there. They, nobody can get in there or up or whatever, you know, without getting hit up. That's what I think Dan, that we would need here, you know, is, you know, one or two. And that would cut the, that would pretty much take care of that problem in a way, if I envisioned it and think about it. You know, like I said, I'd be willing to work for the city doing that or whatever, you know? I need a job. And I'd be good at it, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you for your offer of help. Anyone else from the public? All right, I'm going to bring it back to council. Are there any comments, questions, concerns from members of the council? Otherwise, it'd like a motion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we adopt ordinance number 3214.
I'll second it.
That's the second reading, actually. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The last meeting, one of the speakers wondered about frequency of maintenance and patrol. And I did ask those questions at the last meeting, I guess somewhat rhetorically because I received no answers to those. I'm glad to hear that, that things have improved. Sounds like so much of this, even despite protestations otherwise, is aimed at homeless persons, and they're collecting in that spot. So it was with great reluctance that I supported it last time. I don't like to see ordinances of this type singling out narrow areas for expanded enforcement capability. So for that reason, I will register a no vote on the second read.
Thank you. Any further comments from council? Hearing done. We have a motion to approve. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
No? Did I hear you, Mr., you voted yes also? Aye. Okay. Sorry, I didn't hear. Now move on to number five, which is also requested to be polled. All right, who asked for that? Did anyone? Did any member of the council want to review that item? I think a member of the public asked for that, and I don't see anybody running up here.
I'll move the recommendation.
I have a comment on it, but we can go through the motion in a second if there is.
Okay. Their motion to adopt the item.
I just made it.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Seaborn.
Looking at the fiscal impact, based on what we budgeted and now what we are looking at, the estimated cost, looks like there's about $287,000 and change as a, I wouldn't exactly call it a surplus, but a surplus to the budget. I would hope that we could repurpose that, those funds for some other resurfacing projects throughout the city in our Public Works Department.
And my sympathies also. All right, we have a motion. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. Item six, contract custodial services. I don't know who pulled that one.
I did.
You did? Okay. Go ahead.
I just had a quick question for our director of Public Works. I understand the nature of this is receive and file, which I will move the item, but I did have a quick question regarding the RFP and how widely publicized that was. Was that a general RFP that went out to the public, or is it selective to certain companies? Or how'd we do that?
In this case, it was more selective because we had to do it within about 30 days so that we could get someone in place. They only gave us 90 days' notice. The next RFP will be general distribution and will advertise it completely for the eventual takeover of the contract. This, again, is just a month-to-month, up to six months, which will be relatively expensive. The low bid that we received is about, it's probably about $50,000 more than we'd be paying if it was the original contract. But the low bidders, the references include something like Santa Monica with 12,000 square feet and other small municipalities, so we may end up having to go with the number two bidder. We're still reviewing those proposals right now, so I do not have a firm to give you a name tonight, but.
That's fine. Thank you. I appreciate that. I was just, I want to make sure that when we do the RFP that it goes as widely broadcast as possible.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
When you advertise, will you be advertising in the register?
Probably the Wall Street Journal.
The registers.
Motion has been made by Mr. Seaborn. Was there a second? Councilman Florrie has seconded. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. We now come to item seven, which is a final map for tract number 17502.
That was approved.
Oh, sorry, that's the last item. I missed that. Number eight. It's a proposal by Fullerton Heritage regarding a memorandum of understanding of the Santa Fei Depot loading dock.
Thank you, Mayor Joe Fell, City Manager. This item was a request from Fullerton Heritage, well-known organization in town, and is modeled after their, the successful partnership we had with them for the restoration of the Amage Brothers House across the street, which was just recently completed, probably a year ago. The loading dock, I believe we have a picture up here, just to orient you, just a couple of slides. Kind of behind the trees to the left, this is looking south from the top of the parking structure. Loading dock area is right there, extends from the building. To the east, and a couple pictures of the current condition. This is, this is a unique property line and a unique ownership, a shared ownership of this project. So they're, the former redevelopment agency, now the successor agency, owns the eastern portion of the, of the loading dock. Yes. So you'll see, on purpose, we put the two pieces here. We shored, the whole loading dock, entire loading dock was in pretty bad shape. We did some shoring a couple of years ago just to make sure that it was safe and fenced around it. The owner of the lease, Mr. Bushala, did complete some work a couple of years back on his side of the loading dock. And so you can see that, some of the restoration work done right there. If you could show the next slide. This just shows a close-up of the, some of the condition, a lot of water damage to this. And I think there's one more slide. This shows the restored side. Can't see it too well in this picture, but he also has some protection against the pigeons that like to reside in this, in the loading dock. So the, in summary, this request comes from Fullerton Heritage. Mr. Bushala has offered to share his plans. 30th Street Architects has offered to donate some of their work on this. And we're following the same model, essentially the same terms of an MOU with Fullerton Heritage for this restoration project as well. They'll fully manage it, and we're recommending approval. I know Mr. Galvin is here from the organization and others, so I think if you had any questions directly of Mr. Galvin, he'd be happy to come up to the podium. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from members of the council?
Well, I believe, too, maybe you said it and I missed it, that Fullerton Heritage is paying for the restoration.
That's correct. They're proposing to fund the restoration, and I think they'll get a lot of donations, and they will experience this.
I do have a question. I note that 30th Street Architects, who I believe donated their time here, there's a comment by them at the end of their letter, "We do recommend that the third deteriorated bay of the structure that is sagging be shored immediately." Is there some plan to take care of that before someone is unfortunately underneath it and it falls on them?
I believe the shoring and the condition is stable. Mr. Hoppy has inspected it, so they're going to get started.
It's about as stable as it's going to get. It's really in pretty poor condition. It is completely fenced off. We do not let the public near it, so if it were to collapse, there should be no one underneath it.
Okay. Thank you.
In order to move this along, I will move the recommendation.
Second. No, you can have it. Second. Okay, I'll second it. Any further discussion from council? Any member of the public like to speak? All right, I'll call the question. Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Unanimous again. The last item on our agenda is item nine, Healthy Eating Active Living Program Grant from St. Jude Medical Center. Thank you for waiting so long.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Hugo Carrillo, once again. This item before you tonight is to seek the approval of the Heal Grant from St. Jude. Over the past year, St. Jude and the city have been collaborating on this initiative, basically ways to inspire healthy practices in our community. With this grant, the city will be able to fund a grant writer annually in the amount of $15,000 to pursue and prepare grants aimed at promoting healthier habits with a focus on disadvantaged communities. An additional $102,000 will also be available for the purchase of outdoor exercise equipment to be located at selected parks that serve disadvantaged communities here in the city of Fullerton. These efforts follow in the direction of Resolution 1083, which was passed in 2010. It's the Heal Cities Resolution that supports Fullerton's commitment to obesity prevention. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you may have. I also want to mention that Mr. Barry Ross and Tracy Bowers with St. Jude are here today. I'd like to thank them for working with us so diligently and really coming up some great ideas. They're here tonight as well, if you would like to ask any questions.
Are there any questions from members of the council?
I'd just like to make a short comment. It's an unusual thing in our modern society where we make people who are going to give us $117,000 sit in the audience while we torture them for three hours. Thank you very much.
If that were a motion, I would second it.
That's a motion. I'll move the recommendation.
Any comments from members of the council?
Public comment?
If you may, if you wish.
No, I was just going to say, public comment.
I don't think there are any. I didn't see anybody rushing up, but if anyone would like to speak for the public, seeing no one, I'm going to keep it here. Any further discussion or comments by members of the council? Do we have the motion? I know it was moved. Do we have a second? I missed a second.
I was second.
Okay, I was a second. I'm sorry. All right, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?